Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
(inaudible)
At this time, I'd like to open the meeting up for the Citizens Open Forum, which is a time that anyone can come forward and discuss something that is not on today's agenda. If you'd just state your name and your address, please, when you come forward.
My name's Gary Dutton, 1405 Adam Travis Court. I just thought it would be appropriate, after some recent, maybe misunderstanding, to state that our national motto is "In God We Trust." That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming forward.
Dennis Lawber, 2968 Tasker Lane. With me today are three Boy Scouts who are working on their citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. One of them is familiar with this room, as his father used to be the mayor. One of them is my son, and we're hopeful that when the meeting adjourns, perhaps Mayor Peck, who is an Eagle Scout, could be able to spend a few minutes with the boys.
Absolutely, and I'd be glad to do that. Dennis, what troop?
They're with Troop Two.
Troop Two.
And we may have a couple other boys. I'm expecting at least two other boys to filter in and to show up also.
Okay. Guys, we're glad to have you here today, and if you'd be willing to stick around after the meeting, I'd be glad to visit with you a little bit and see what you guys are up to. Thanks for being here. Okay, we'll move on. Oh, excuse me.
Don Whitman, 317 East Prescott, WITTAMAN. Basically, I could see when you were flashing some pictures on the screen over there, you're going to answer one of the questions. I was just wondering what part of the riverbanks you were going to be stabilizing. And the second one was considering Hawthorne School Building. Since we did it, you did it to Roosevelt Lincoln, and all you had to tear down on that was what was originally the gymnasium and the music room where they played their instruments. And I was just wondering if it would be cheaper to tear it down and rebuild for cheap housing, or to do like you did with Roosevelt Lincoln and just change the rooms to a part low-cost housing projects? And that's basically all I was wanting to know. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don. Of course, those are private developments, and the city doesn't really decide how those decisions are made, essentially, but I'm sure we'll have more discussion on that. Is that the 24th that's going to be potentially coming before us? Well, anyway, I believe we're going to have some lengthy and probably lively discussion on that. Thanks for your comments. There's no other comment. We'll move on to awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, the day of January 10, 2011, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. In the City of Salina, Aaron Davis, a senior at Salina Central High School, will read the proclamation.
Hi, Aaron.
Hi. I will read the City of Salina proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. of 2011. Whereas the 17th day of January is the birthday and anniversary of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Dr. King stood before the entire world as a man of peace, champion of human dignity, and an example of love and brotherhood, and whereas the citizens of Salina do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the good of all humankind, and they do desire to perpetuate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all God's children. Now therefore, I, Aaron Peck, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the day of January 10, 2011, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great leader of humankind, and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina Kansas to be affixed this day, January 10, 2011.
Aaron, do you know of any special events?
Yes. On January, or, excuse me, this year's theme is the Mountain Top Experience, in reference to his final speech and the ideals it embodied. And on January 13 through 14, storyteller Robert Kikuchi Ugojo will make presentations in Salina schools. The performances are courtesy of Salina Arts and Humanities. And on January 15, there will be a community potluck dinner at 6:30 PM at Redeemer Lutheran Church, 743 East in Magnolia. Those who attend are asked to bring a dish to share. And then on January 16, a Martin Luther King Jr. Day celebration will be at 3:30 PM at Redeemer Lutheran. The event will feature a speech by the Reverend Dr. John Blackwell of Kansas Williston University, and a compilation of songs reflecting the Mountain Top theme performed by the community choir. Anyone can participate in the choir. The first two rehearsals will be January 6 and 13 at 6:00 PM at Quail United Methodist Church, 725 Comanche. And there will also be two special services on January 17, which is Martin Luther King Jr. Day. One will be at noon at St. John Missionary Baptist Church, 215 South Chicago, and the other will be at 12:10 PM at Sam's Chapel on the campus of Kansas Williston University.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're going to be a regular coming up here in front of us.
Wow.
We have a signed copy of this proclamation for you. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 3, 2001. Item 6.2, approve the minutes of January 5, 2001.
Is the consent agenda okay with everyone, or is there anything on the minutes anyone would like to change?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We've moved to second that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. Same sign. Motion passes four to zero. No development business, we'll move on to administration.
Item 8.1, resolution number 116797, authorizing a renewal agreement for physician services as the Fire Department's medical director.
Mayor Commissioners, I am Larry Mulikin, your Fire Chief, and with me today I have Greg Barkway, the Chief of EMS. And what we have before you today is a renewal of Dr. Harrington's contract as our medical director. As most of you know, it's been on the commission for a while. Dr. Harrington works as required by the State of Kansas. We have to have a medical director, and we are very pleased with Dr. Harrington, not only being the co-director of the emergency room, emergency facilities at Salina Regional, but also being our medical director, gives us some synergy with our medical treatments all the way from the field and into the hospital. And Shawn has been a wonderful medical director. Today, he serves not only us, but as part of his position with us. He is on the State Board of EMS, on the Medical Director Oversight Committee. So he's on the committee that oversees all the medical directors across the state of Kansas, and it's a great tribute to him and his experience, and he brings military background to that position that he holds with us. Give you some examples of some of the things that Dr. Harrington has done. I outlined those in the blue sheet to you. And one of them was, it really struck me last year, was when we were in the throes of the H1N1 influenza outbreak and trying to get everybody vaccinated, I had the chance to hear Yvonne Givens talk about, at Executive Staff Meeting, about the difficulty of identifying enough nurses to carry out the vaccination program. And it struck me that paramedics can deliver vaccinations. All we needed to do was get the medical protocol in place and work with Yvonne and be a backup for the Health Department in vaccinating our children and adults. And I walked back across the street. At that time, Marvin was still our Chief of EMS. I said, "Marvin, get hold of Dr. Harrington, get a medical protocol in place, and in case Yvonne needs us, we'll be ready to go." And in two days, I had the medical protocol done, Dr. Harrington signed off on it, and we were ready to assist in that vaccination process. It's great credit to Dr. Harrington and the Chief's position of EMS and to our entire community. So with that, I would ask for your approval of this item, renewing Dr. Harrington's contract with the Salina Fire Department and the City of Salina. Any questions at all?
Questions for Chief Mulikin? Chief, just to refresh, what did we increase that amount to from the previous amount? I don't remember what.
Year before last. We went from $24,000 to $30,000, year before last.
If no other questions, is there any public comment? Except for motion. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, I move we adopt resolution number 11-6797, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract renewal for medical director services with Dr. Shawn Harrington in the amount of $30,000.
Second.
We've moved to second that we adopt resolution number 11-6797. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. Same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item 8.2, award of contract for the Smoky Hill Riverbank stabilization, project number 092754.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This project is a unique project that we haven't done here for a while, as far as a Smoky Riverbank stabilization project. Frank Norton with Highland Meadows Subdivision came to us, and it looks like around 2006, from what I could tell from the correspondence, and had some concerns about the riverbank along their subdivision. And we included a map in your packet that did kind of illustrate a little bit of how much the river actually has moved over the last forty-ish, forty-plus years. Wayne and I went out and took some pictures of it last week, just to kind of at least show you some pictures of the kind of vicinity. But it looks like it's moved around a little over 100 feet over the years, and just with river hydraulics, it's hard to contain a river to begin with. So they're going to move, and they're going to meander. And the river's definitely done that and started doing that in this area. Just the main concern is about a thousand, a property that's, a good example here of, right, that fence used to actually be in that area. Do you have the pointer here or not? Might give a pointer. Use the pointer that he's got. That right, where he's pointing right there is the edge of the fence. And that fence has been basically sloped off, slumped off there along their property. And Frank and a lot of the Home Association people are here today, so they can probably tell you when that actually occurred. Thank you, Jason. But this whole entire bank here has been caving in and moving over the last few years. Wayne, go to the next slide. There's that fence I talked about. Keep going. That's a good example of, it's getting pretty close to their hike and bike trail that they have in their subdivision. That's Wayne there taking some pictures. There's the other side of the fence. Keep going. Kind of the slope and the steepness of it. This is a picture of our soccer, the soccer complex, looking from Highland Meadows Hamlet to the west. This is the actual soccer complex, it's just right here to the right. A lot of the water from the soccer complex drains through this ditch, and it comes out right here. There's the levee, top of the levee right through there. When you look at the river, the river has tried to migrate north as well into the soccer complex, and this, did you go back to that last one, Wayne? Yeah, right here, this is the steep bank, actually on the soccer complex side, so this is part of some stabilization that would occur on the city's side of the property. Go to the next one. That's just a picture of the actual erosion and some stabilized area that'll be necessary with this project as well. This is an example of, we just thought this was interesting, because this is what a lot of people do when they're, when they live next to a creek or a river, you throw concrete rubble in there, and sometimes that works. But as you can see, what happens when it's not quite engineered correctly, or has the, it just erodes out around the concrete, so that's, and I don't know, that's been a-
You do need engineers there.
Well, sometimes, you know. And the guy we've hired for this has done this a lot around the state, and so this is the general concept, but it'll be just a little bit gradation than this, and it'll be put in to not help, to not cause the river to actually run out around the rock. So that was just a picture of that. There is Highland Meadows Hamlet, the houses, and this is the bank that is, that we're looking at, from the soccer field that's eroded. It's, in some areas, it's almost straight up and down. Here's some of the trees that have caved in over the years. They're sitting on that side. Go ahead, Wayne. Okay. That's a good picture of really the steepness of it. Is that on our side, or?
That's on the east side.
That's on the east side, so, okay, so that's the Highland Meadows side there as well. Is that the last picture?
Now, this is looking back at the, where the fence is missing, where we first started.
The fence that we were looking at that was missing is right up in there. Yeah, right in that area, okay. So it gives you kind of a general idea what the project looks like. We hired Wild Horse River Works out of Topeka to assist us with this project, and he has, Phil Bach is his name, and he's performed a lot of these projects around the state. And with good success and continues to do so, bits of the project were received on December 7 from five bidders, and were over the engineer's estimate, which is the main concern we've had for the last few weeks, looking at the bids, trying to figure out what went wrong, or what the concerns, what the bid tab and what the bid numbers that could possibly have caused the bid to be so high. So after talking with the designer and looking at the local rock quarries and some of the bid prices, there were two items that stood out, namely the rock, the riprap rock, and the soil moving. Typically, the soil moving is half of that number, and then the riprap rock is about two-thirds of that number. We've seen it as high as 40, but quite a bit lower in most cases. So it's hard to figure out exactly, you know, what is it? Is it a 40-minute haul route from Woodbine? Is that different than he's dealt with in other places? Possibly have some of these contractors not perform this type of work, you know, possibly, so there's been some risk into it. But either way, we do have a low bidder, and we have to deal with it. So Smoky Hill bidder is a low bidder, and we have talked with them about, you know, just bid prices that they had, and they've already proposed some cost-reduction measures. So they've, they believe maybe some recycled concrete, or if we used a little different type of rock, we could actually reduce the cost significantly. So we're in kind of a, we have a lot of options to consider today, and so we thought we'd give them to you, and we just answer questions the best we could. We could award the project just the way it is today and find the source of funds for it. Right now, we had $182,000 in the flood and drainage fund, so that's about the maximum amount of dollars we have for a project like this, but, Jason, we thought we'd put this option on there to see if we could do something else. The second one would just be to reject it and rebid it with some changes in the rock gradations, basically looking at a little of the design parameters to see if we can do some things different, and that's a fair thing to do as well. Or just reject it and wait till we can program more funding, because just, you know, the possibility does exist, it could still rebid it, and it still comes in in the middle 200s or a little lower, possibly, but we feel like that Smoky Hill has already proposed some solutions that would be workable. So after we wrote this blue sheet, we looked at other bid processes that are reused, and value engineering came into the equation. There are areas in the country and around the state that a contractor comes in with a good idea, well, they're the low bidder, and they have a good idea, and so it's fair to, it's fair to listen to that, to that idea, and then actually award the project, since they're still the low bidder, with a change order or some kind of a, you know, with utilizing that value add engineering that they have brought to the table, or construction practice, or whatever. So that is an actual fourth option that we came up with late last week after this went to, came to you all. Greg has confirmed that's a possibility, so it would be another way to say, okay, we want to, we do want to work with the low bidder. They were about $40,000 lower than everybody else, so we'd have to, you know, it would be hard, I think, for somebody that was second or third low to come and say, well, I can reduce my costs way more than they can, because they're already quite a ways away. So Smoky Hill is a good reputable contractor in Salina, and we could meet with them this week and just go over the bid prices and see if there's a way to reduce them in some fashion that we could actually afford. We may or may not be able to do that, but it'd be, it might be worth a try. So that's a fourth option that I gave you at this time, and I will entertain questions at this point.
You lost me on that, Mr. Stack.
Okay.
What was the fourth option? Can you-
Direct us to work with the low bidder to reduce the cost.
The low bidder being Smoky Hill. Who was value engineering?
Smoky Hill actually proposed some different options for us. They had some savings, they said if we could use this type of rock, it would save you $40,000. If we could use this type of rock, it would save you 60. So they've already brought those things to the table for us.
Okay, but the 257, the $257,000 amount on this bid is already about $140,000. It reflects the savings.
It does not reflect any savings.
Okay, then that's where I lost you.
That's the, yeah, we, the bidders all bid on a certain amount or certain material, and so that's what the bids are. These are, these are the, everybody bid on the same thing. After the bids came in, and Smoky Hill has worked with the low bidder and talked to them about their bid, they said, okay, if you do this, we can reduce it. So that would actually go quite a bit lower than the 257.
Okay, because really, according to the money that we already had allotted for this, the $182,000, we're really about $76,000 off.
That's correct.
So if they can come down another $140,000, is what you said? Or what did you say?
Well, they're at 257, and they'd have to come down around 70, 80, $80,000.
Okay, so we'd be right. Okay, because then the other thing that I noticed on here is where you put in the fiscal note that there are no other options for funding available at this time, and then a recommendation number one says to direct you to find a source of funding.
Yep, yep.
I'm like, okay, if you've already identified that there is no source of funding, where are you going to find this pot at the end of the rainbow?
As always, yep.
So, yeah, that concerned me. That concerned me. We have no other funding, but we'll figure it out. So I feel a lot better including that fourth option, because now you're saying that we're a lot closer to our target amount, is that correct?
Could be, yeah, that's a possibility. You know, it's, I'm not sure we can get to 182. I don't know, we just have to see.
Oh.
Okay, this is kind of- Well, I just want to make sure I understood him right. So are you saying that if we approve this today, we would approve it at the 257, but we would come back with a change order?
Is that a possibility, Greg, or would we actually come back the next time with a new amount?
Commissioners, possibly. You're still obligated up to the 257, 898, and one of the things we talked about is there are five bids, besides one bid, all, four of them are all within a pretty normal range, so we have to presume we have decent bids for the project, and the estimate was missed one way or another. So given that, if you're going to do a project, I don't think you'd look at these bids and say, boy, these are terrible bids. I think you'd look at the bids and say, these are probably decent market bids, this is what the project costs. So if you set that aside and say, okay, we'd like to do it, we have what we believe are decent competitive bids, you come back, the low bid is 257, 898, that's what you're, would be obligated to if it's awarded. The value engineering that Dan's speaking of means the contractor would work with us to identify cost-savings options that might be able to be applied in this, and if so, we could come back and do some form of a change order to officially recognize those, not knowing if that's $10,000 worth, 20, 50, 70, whatever it is, but try to work with them as much as possible.
But it's so close to some of those other bids, they're not given the same opportunity? I guess I'm a little confused on how you're handling this.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's ways you could typically do that. I mean, one way is to reject all bids, go back, revise the scope, you know, investigate some of those things, revise the scope, and then rebid the project.
To me, that's unfair.
Yeah, it is. There's a presumption, since you're working off the low bid, that if you reduce the scope, that I guess presumably you might, you would, the proportionate difference would, for the most part, be the same anyhow. I think that's probably the presumption.
Yeah, with a lot of, a lot of bid processes, you're trying to select the lowest and best bid, and those are estimated quantities. So you get some numbers from them, and then you work with the low bidder to sometimes do a better, a better, get a better cost out of them, based on their, based on their bid price. So it doesn't, if the bid process is set up to get a low bidder, then you work with them the best you can to get the best value.
I just wanted to make sure of that.
You do run into issues if all of a sudden you're adding, you have change orders that add to the project, and instead of a $258,000 project, you end up with a $330,000 project, and none of the other bidders got a chance to bid on that. That's when you really get into trouble.
And that's what I was asking.
Yeah, and I need to ask Dan a couple questions real quick. Dan, in talking with the Finance Director, did Rod look at whether this could be bonded with other projects and the impact of that on the debt service?
He did, and that was why I put that in there, no funding options are available, but he said you can always bond it. I mean, it just goes-
Well, yeah, and the issue with bonding is how it impacts the debt service. There's still costs, there's interest, just the thinking is, is this is more, this is really more of a more expensive project than what we had initially thought, obviously, and so that's an option. Now, if the value engineering can cut some of it out of it, whether we could pick up a little bit from the sales tax fund, or pick up a little bit out of the general fund, it might be a reasonable enough number that we could do that. So I do think, depending on the impact of the value engineering bringing down the cost, it might give you some other cash funding options, but it's a possibility we could take it and come back and bond it as well. It's not a huge project from a bonding perspective, and still figure out a way to get it done.
But we approve it at the rate on the blue sheet today.
That's what you'd be obligated to. If Smoky Hill comes back and says, we worked with your staff, we did everything we could do, but in order to do it right, we really can't change anything, that's what you're obligated to.
Which is Mr. Stack's option four, work with the low bidder to reduce cost, but you're saying maybe option two is better, which is reject all bids, revise the scope, and just completely rebid it.
No, I don't know if that's better. That's an option. I think that you, I think that they're not mutually exclusive. I think what Dan's saying is, is that you award the bid at this, and so we know we're obligated to 257, 898, and then the low bidder has committed to work with him to bring you back, hopefully, a change order, looking at maybe the type of rock, or whatever that might be, that brings the cost down, and we get to come back and do that. Is that accurate?
Is that fair, Greg? Because I think we could do that, or, go ahead.
But really, we're still obligated for the full amount.
Yeah, that's the problem I see.
Even if they only drop it by 5,000.
Right, right. So what I, what I talked to Greg about would be, we would bring back, you would, you would direct us to work with the low bidder today to reduce the cost. You wouldn't award it on anything.
Not awarding the contract.
Yeah, you wouldn't award anything today. And then we would come back to you with an award and a change order immediately, and then it's all, everybody understands what-
All at once.
It's all at once.
So Dan, you're not asking for an award, just to work with him first, then come back?
No, I didn't think, that's, that's what we talked about, I believe.
I'm sorry, that was just a conversation that Mr. Stack and I had prior to the meeting, and without the opportunity to visit with Mr. Gage, certainly as we looked at the options, and that's what I was consulting quickly with Mr. Gage about, was whether or not, and I know Mr. Brown is here, I didn't know if it'd be appropriate to possibly ask for that bid, just to be held long enough to have that conversation, to see if there could be a productive result.
It's not as productive, or it's not as efficient to go, as Commissioner Angel mentioned, go with the number two. And when you, when you, when you reject a bid and start all over, obviously, all these people are contacted, and so do you explain why we threw them out and why we're wanting to rebid?
Yep.
So if they are aware that the low bidder could possibly even take into consideration a more efficient or costly way of doing this project, doesn't it give them some, how do we know that they won't come back with a lower price?
They could, they just have to beat-
Do they know-
Price plus 40,000, and that's, that's the thing that's-
Well, they know today that we've only got $182,000 in that account.
Yeah, they knew that before, it didn't seem to matter.
Oh, they did.
Didn't seem to help us any, at least, I wish it would have, yes.
Yeah, it's an experiment that shows that your budget estimate doesn't always match up with your low bid, right?
Right. Before we go down this road any further, and I apologize for being a little abrupt here, but I'm still trying to figure out why we're paying for this in the first place.
Okay.
This might feed into that too. I had a question on the actual scope of the work, the area of work. Dan, what I tried to do is overlay the channel path from 1966 on top of today.
Correct, correct.
And I can see that impacted area, especially up by Point 2.
Right.
How far it's moved over towards the east.
Right.
But you also have another area with even more dramatic distance movement, that's on that lower leg on the left-hand photo, yeah, down towards the bottom. So if you look at maybe halfway between the Point 1 and the BOL and just go straight across the river to the west there, there's significant movement towards the west at that first snake.
Right there, yes, yes, that's correct.
And distance-wise, tremendous, it's about threefold, the distance moving that direction.
From here to here, yes, it's quite a bit.
The only reason that I raise that question is once we stabilize on that project boundary and then arguably we're going to create the hydro force on the other side.
Right.
To wash out what's already shown as an unstable point even further and do we have any considerations there by property owners, the city, whatever's going on in that area that we're going to end up with another project over there?
Okay.
Much larger in magnitude or smaller, doesn't matter, but...
But again, before that question gets answered...
That's our legal obligation.
And here's my premise, and if Mr. Norton likes to speak to this, I'd welcome that, but I know Mr. Norton is a very intelligent man.
Mm-hmm.
And if I'm developing a piece of property, I'm going to know prior to ever developing that property, what the erosion lines are looking like or what a historical pattern is there, because obviously just walking over to the edge there, you see that that's an issue.
Mm-hmm.
When was Highland Meadows established? 2000, early 2000s, I don't remember when.
Probably 1995.
95?
Yep.
Okay, 1995. And I'd be very interested in seeing the same picture from, you know, 1995 to today.
Okay.
But I guess, I guess I don't understand why it's the taxpayer's obligation to stabilize, to stabilize this when I can't help but think that a developer would have known this is going to be an issue when I start laying out my lots and homes are being built. And I certainly can't understand why we're bearing the full brunt of this.
Right.
And anyone who could speak to that or why that expectation is there would be helpful for me.
I can speak a little bit to it and then I'll ask Jason and Frank too, but they said in 2006 was when this really was exasperated with the floods of 2006. So that's when sections of the bank were caving off overnight and so, you know, like you...
Flood happened in 2006?
Yeah, May of '06.
I thought it was 2007.
Yeah, '06 was when it was dry, '07 was when it flooded. So it was around that time. So that was, yeah.
So he came to you in 2006 and the flood happened in 2007?
Did, and that's, from what Frank was telling me, that was, that was the time he was really watching it and they were kind of prodding, I don't know when that fence actually came down, but that, it was, he could tell me, he can get up here, I guess, and talk about that. So yeah, I asked him that exactly today, so I guess I'll just defer to Jason.
Legal obligation, practical, just help me understand.
And one thing too, on this west side, this is city property, so for your information, this is the city park, soccer field. So we're stabilizing that side as well, so there is some city, maybe some, maybe some city interest here, you know, that's, so we, because we, the point is we're actually stabilizing this point and then this bank as well.
That was the area that you showed.
Correct.
I thought it was further up towards the road, okay.
Yep. I'll defer to Jason and Frank.
Mayor and Commissioners, it's been a little while since we looked at this aspect of it and I trust Mr. Norton will help me out or disagree with me as he chooses, but the, my recollection is that we are in this conversation, certainly erosion is a natural process, but my understanding is the distinction that we're in the situation where in conjunction with the flood, the development of the flood control system, we are actually, am I correct, in acquired right-of-way for the development of that flood control system? We acquired fee title for that purpose, okay.
Yeah, this line here is the, is the part that we acquired property for, for the new river channel. The river channel used to go through here, through the soccer field. It's, this is what we acquired right there.
Same, same point and that being that in the process of that acquisition, we defined the area in which we could operate, so to speak, that flood control system. And Mother Nature is obviously doing its work, but we are still limited and not in position to simply let that occur beyond the area that we acquired for purposes of that flood control system. That's my recollection of my understanding of the city's interest and the city's responsibility in the context where you're speaking of acquired property for the purpose of construction and operation of a flood control system. Is that fair to say, Frank? Does that make sense that...
Yeah, I think...
Oh, I'm sorry, if we could finish one thought here. So the land that we have, you're saying it's our obligation essentially to prevent that from spreading to... Well, I suppose the choice is, one could always acquire, I suppose, additional property in anticipation of the continued movement of the channel, but to the extent that it does move and we either check or control that movement or acquire additional property so that it could continue that process, those are basically what I would understand to be our choices. Do we have other properties that we will be applying the standard to? Do we have other properties that the channel runs along that we'll need to stabilize because we need to prevent it from happening?
We do have another area where there's erosion issues. I'm going to have to defer to Dan because I don't know that I can tell you whether that's within the acquired property of the city, the, there's another location.
We have another area that the Corps is looking at just north of here, along Gipson and Iowa. That's the next one where the actual road is compromised and I don't, and that's Indian Rock, so I'm not sure exactly what, if that's actually, did we buy that right-of-way or not? I can't, I'm not sure if that was a, I guess it probably was, because it's the cutoff channel.
Dan, that was certainly part of an acquisition because the channel was built during the levy construction.
So I think it's the same type of property, Aaron, but we can check on that.
So we, I guess we legally are obligated to prevent Mother Nature's natural course of action. I believe that would be the case in this situation where we have acquired, in this case, fee title to real estate for the purpose.
If it doesn't work, we have to continue to just invest and invest until we know it.
And I guess you can think about it as we own the channel and now our channel is encroaching on someone else's property, so we've got to stop our section of ownership from extending onto someone else's property.
That's a good way to put it.
Yeah, Commissioner, I defer to Greg, but I, it may be even one step further when we look at the acquisition for the sole purpose of a flood control project. And, you know, when we're talking about flood control, we think of the rains and so forth, but what we're talking about is the impact of the river on properties traditionally in the flooding setting, but in this particular case, you still have an impact to the river on other properties. So we do have a flood control project, which is a specific purpose of this. I don't know, I could defer to Greg if he thinks that if we, let's just say we own property that the river flowed through, but it wasn't for flood control purposes, it was for a completely separate purpose, does that then place an obligation on us to protect adjacent property from the river? I'm not sure if it does, but because we own this for a purpose, it's a different situation.
That's, that's the distinction, I think. As I say, it's normally a natural process and as you all probably know, as it does change, as there is change through erosion, the, and if that body of water is the, is the demarcation, even in terms of ownership of property, it will follow that movement unless the movement is so dramatic as to constitute what is called avulsion and in that situation, the ownership lines don't change, even with the change in course in the, of the river or whatever body of water. Here, I think the sole distinction is that we did acquire real estate for the purpose of construction and maintenance of that channel. And as Commissioner Angel put it well, I think, to the extent that it becomes the nature of an encroachment by virtue of that movement in this particular case, rather than a natural change in the boundary line.
Short answer is yes.
Don Whitman, you had a comment?
I have known that river since the year of 1945. At one time, believe it or not, if you know where Penn and Gipson come together, on the northwest corner of that, the river used to flow from there up towards about where the alley comes out on Gipson, well, I mean on, what's that street? Prince Street, I think. Anyway, it comes out on the next street from Penn, Oakdale. Oakdale, it came out there and it went over at one time, there is a pump station there on what was Smoky Hill Drive between Kansas and Columbia. The river at one time used to run in that direction, it was one of my time, but part of the river channel was still from, on the northwest corner of Penn and it was running in a northwesterly direction. And unless something is done to increase the flow of water coming through our flood levy now, there is not enough current in that river to cause any erosion. The only erosion you're going to get is from an extremely hard rain and maybe a runoff that would come into it because when they rebuilt the dam down there and made it concrete, I walked across that dam two or three times and the water was 10 foot away from the dam. It was going through that circular cutoff that they used to use for a power wheel to grind wheat and stuff like that in the mills there. And it was not coming anywhere close to the dam, but they closed that off, they had gates in there to close that. And unless you put a small dam across the cutoff, say one that would be maybe just a little, an inch or two above the normal level of the water, you're not going to get any water from the main river. It's going to go straight down that line. And where the cutoff is, it's a hard sand bottom and it's, you're lucky if it's a foot deep, because I know I've waited in it quite a bit when I was much, much younger. And I knew that, I knew that river from where the Kenwood Park is, where they used to have, well, Ole Overfelt was his name, they called it, something else, but he had a boat dock there where he rented right across Fore Street there from the water plant. And I knew that river from the dam clear up on around because over where the Kenwood Park is where the, they used to have a brick horse stable over there and there was a real sharp turn right there with the river and that bank was probably about 15 foot high. So without any further and faster current coming down there, rebanking the river, which I thought they could take like broken up concrete and even asphalt that they get from where they're rebuilding streets or like if they would happen to tear Hawthorne down and use bricks and stuff like that, which would save the city money because that's already belongs to us and the cities themselves could do the work on stuff like that. So erosion is not going to be a great problem within the city limits unless the current is increased. So that was my comment.
Appreciate your input. Thank you. Mr. Norton?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Frank Norton. My address is 2524 East Magnolia. A number of the folks from Highland Meadows are here. The president of the Home Association, Jim Stuckey, is here. As you know, I was the developer. Let's go back, let's go back to the 50s when this was designed. The purpose of the design was to control a flood control system by changing the channel starting at this point. And that's the point shown on the overlays. From that point on, when the city condemned the ownership to the entire channel, the city owns the river at that point. The city is responsible if it goes beyond what the city condemned to conduct the system with. Now what you're ordinarily thinking about is the usual situation where there are riparian rights and the title is down the middle of the river. And if we were south of the city property, across from where the problem is from the soccer field drainage, we could do something about it. It would be our responsibility to correct it. But right now, we can't do a thing. That's your property. All we can do is stand there and watch that property go in the river because it's waste, pure and simple legal waste that's being conducted all the time. Now, I'm not saying anybody's at fault, but if there needed to be riprap on that bank in the beginning, that should have been part of the original plan. Because again, we're helpless in this situation. If it was south, if it was where we owned to the middle of the river, there'd be a different story. And there is a little different story with the soccer situation. The drainage is such that it has destroyed the outlet where the drainage comes off the soccer property and goes into the river and they're going to have to reconstruct that. That's part of the money we're talking about here. In addition, they're going to stabilize that bank going north of where the input is and there's going to be a weir on the end of that on the north end, over on that side. There are four weirs on our side and to show you the extreme nature of it, the weir that I've seen and I'm sure you've seen the same thing, ordinarily is with the flow and directs the current away from where you're trying to remove the current. These weirs are pointed right into the current, so there's a severe situation there that has to be fixed. But it's your problem, we can't do anything about it. It's your property, it's your river and it's our damage. And it's going on all the time, it's just, to watch sometimes when the river's a little higher and what it does is it undercuts that bank and the bank is vertical, undercuts it and it drops just like calving a glacier up in Alaska, only on a smaller basis. And old man Rivers enjoyed every minute of it, I think, because it's going on and it's getting very serious, very concerned. It's, it's the wrong thing for the city to be doing as far as its responsibility to conduct things in a correct way as far as nature is concerned, but most of all, we're losing ground.
Questions, Mr. Norton?
Thank you for that. Okay, I could cover other things if you wanted me to, but I think everything's before you and we have told the contractors who contacted us that we will cooperate fully. We, we don't want to have cost in replacing our walking path and that sort of thing, but we've agreed to permit them access to, they're going to have to store a lot of the rock on our property, they're going to, we've talked about it, removing the topsoil and placing the rock there and then when the project is over, replacing the topsoil and doing all of that. all of that. But we want to cooperate in every way we can with you, but we have to have your help. It's a desperate situation as far as we're concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No further questions, staff? Any further public comment? No, I'll accept the motion.
Mayor, I move that we give staff the authority to work with the low bidder to reduce the cost, and after having sufficient time to do that, bring it back before the commission for decision.
Clarify that, option number four.
Right.
Second.
Do you have further comment?
No.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we go with option number four regarding project number zero-nine-dash-two-seven-five-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item eight-point-three, approval of a deviation from the comprehensive plan's impact streets, typical section of the, and supplemental agreement number two with Wilson and Company for the East Magnolia improvements, project number ten-two-eight-zero-eight.
Mr. Stack?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As we discussed last week at the study session, East Magnolia is a project we started in May of this year and proceeded as fast as we could get to field-check plans in the fall. And at the same time, we passed, the city commission passed or adopted the updated comprehensive plan, which has some impact street verbiage that we discussed more last week. I've included it in the blue sheet. And as we talked about, we can, the project doesn't lend itself to a full impact street section with a median and large parking and amenity areas as well as four lanes. And so we've come up with what we feel, and actually thanks to you all and Jason, coming up with the idea to really make the median where the future lanes would be. And that is what we're proposing now, is that we would build a four-lane section for a portion of the project through the, through to about Huntington, and then have a median that would be removed at a later date, whenever the ADT and the traffic volumes generate that. And then as we develop through there, the possibility does exist to possibly get more right-of-way to the east of Huntington even, because some of that's undeveloped. And so the hope would be in the future that we would look at our typical section and our development policies to, if we need to go with an impact street on a certain area, that we would get the property to do so in the future. Hundred foot just isn't quite enough, and based on the proximity to the properties and the driveways here. So we would recommend that we proceed with Wilson and Company supplemental agreement to revise the cross-sections and put in the medians and the four lanes, and then necessary storm drainage work to accomplish that. And I entertain questions, I guess, at this point.
Questions, staff?
And is supplemental agreement number two, is that the increase that you're talking about in the study session to redesign the...
Correct. Twenty-one thousand dollars.
A lot less than what we...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was. I mean, basically, you talked about, okay, if we can't do the impact street, we just keep the same profile. And then we really already had that profile done anyway, we just had to add the median to it. So it helps, it helped a lot by going with that kind of compromise solution that gives us an impact street to a certain extent, but doesn't just totally change the entire project. So, yeah, it's likely they had a good deal for us. The main thing we have to worry about is the stormwater. So that's really, eighty hours of it is redoing the stormwater design. So that's, that just has to occur, because we have to move the inlets twelve feet to the south. And Tim is here for detailed questions if you want to ask some more.
Further questions? This can be done in one motion, I'm assuming?
What do you think, Greg?
I apologize, Mayor, I was speaking with the city manager and did not hear your question.
I think there's some Boy Scouts that are having a hard time, too.
Yes, I understand.
Can this be done in two motions, Greg, or one motion, Greg, or does this need to be done in two?
I think one would be fine in this circumstances.
There's no further questions? Is there any public comment? No, I'll accept the motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the proposed deviation from the comprehensive plan's impact streets, typical section, and supplemental agreement number two with Wilson and Company for project number ten-dash-two-eight-zero-eight, East Magnolia improvements.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the proposed deviation from the comprehensive plan's impact streets, typical section, and supplemental agreement number two with Wilson and Company for project number ten-dash-two-eight-zero-eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Verifying.
Yes.
The thing the city manager and I were discussing was the fact that we both recognized that neither of us recalled having spoken to you about a request for an executive session on attorney-client matter, and that's what our concern was.
Very quickly, since these Boy Scouts have sat through a thoroughly boring meeting when you're of that age, it's very exciting when you're up here. If no other commissioner had a problem with it, I was going to let them at least prove to their mothers that they were here if they'd come forward and state their name and their rank in front of the microphone.
I know one of them has extreme dodgeball skills, too, by the way. Absolutely. And here he is.
I'm Max Lawrie, and I'm a first-class scout.
I'm Noah Perks, and I'm a star scout.
I'm Will Shadow, and I'm a life scout.
My name is Nash Johnson, and I'm a second-class scout.
I'm Zach Pip, and I'm a second-class scout.
I'm Jared Walker, and I'm a second-class scout.
I'm Aaron Nesting, and I'm a tenderfoot.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate you coming forward and sitting through that meeting.
Mayor, I move to recess.
Take that trail, walk over and by there in front of Y and J, the Boy Scout built two beautiful benches along that trail in there.
Thank you, Don.
Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss with legal counsel. Matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at five-twenty.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we recess into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero. We're in executive session. Do we expect any action?
We don't.
...of Jimi Hendrix on Saturday, January fifteenth at seven-thirty.